Recording in progress.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this a regular meeting of mayor and council. The first order of business as always is if you can, please rise and give pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, please. Councilperson Marasco suggested that if you're giving more than a silence for the chiefs, that's okay. Yeah, that's fine. So not too many announcements, the city manager's report will cover a lot of the updates. We'll continue to have the mayor's coffee at the net house for those interested, eight o'clock on Thursday mornings. That's for about an hour. Bring your own coffee. We've not worked that into the budget yet. Bring your own coffee. But beyond that, I think we are expecting potentially some snow, so we'll be ready and learn from some of what we had done previously. With that, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda. So I'll get into the proclamations and announcements, and we have a couple of appointments or reappointments. But this, of course, is Black History Month, and so I'd just like to read out a proclamation from the city. Whereas Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements of black Americans and serves as an opportunity to pay homage to our black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our community, our state, and the nation. And whereas the theme for Black History Month in 2025 is African-Americans and Labor, highlights to the vital role black Americans have played in national and local labor movements. Whereas black Americans throughout history have fought for fair wages, better working conditions, and civil rights within the workplace, contributing significantly to the labor movement in both organized and unorganized sectors. Whereas black Americans continue to be at the forefront of labor advocacy, championing workers' rights, pay equity, and workplace fairness, building upon the legacy of those who came before them. And whereas the city of Lewis stands in solidarity with the efforts to promote diversity, honor, and the legacy of black leaders and educate future generations on the ongoing journey of social progress. Resolved, Andrew Williams, the mayor of the city of Lewis, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 as Black History Month, and we encourage all citizens to reflect on the significant contributions of black Americans to our nation's history and their continued efforts to foster equity and justice in our workforce. So we thank for that. The next on the proclamations and recognitions and appointments is presentation of possible action on the appointments of a board of elections. And I think we have three, and this is for upcoming mayor election in May. And I believe we have Mike DiPaolo, Lisa Nothstein, and Larry France have agreed to serve in that capacity. So what I'd be looking for is, you know, possible action appointment to that, those folks to serve on a board of elections. Don't all jump at once.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Larry, help me with the last name.
Yeah, Larry France.
Larry France, Lisa Nothstein, and the last?
Mike DiPaolo.
Mike DiPaolo, of course.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So that puts a board in place. Okay, next E3, it's fitting that during Black History Month, we have a reappointment of, Lewis has formed an African-American Heritage Commission, which ensures that we remain focused on those contributions specifically in our own locality in our town and community. And that is, I'm asking here for a reappointment of Trina Brown Hicks and Dee Lot. And those would be for three-year appointments, and those would go through February 1, 2028.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve Trina Brown Hicks and Dee Lot for three-year terms on the African-American Heritage Commission.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll go with Joe.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And lastly, I think is Janelle here? Last but not least, Janelle is, has been with the city for five years as in a city planning and building manager role. So we'd like to recognize that, and this might be an opportunity for Bill to get a photo op of our city plan. And you know, like I think, Janelle, it's been a busy time for you in this last five years. Lewis has seen a lot of changes in the code and a lot of development that you've overseen and changes with Free Board and things like that, and different challenges that we see specific to Lewis. So I appreciate your work with the city, and I'd like to present you, if you come up here.
Sure.
So this is a certificate, and then, you know, something to, a little gas money there for you. But yeah, this is, we appreciate you, Janelle. Thank you very much. If you want to keep this, you can.
Okay.
Keep everything together for you.
I will, thank you.
Moving right along, we don't have a proclamation, unfortunately, for the Eagles victory, but we can all relish it. So we'll go ahead to the consent. Yeah, we are planning a parade. No, just kidding. Or am I? So there's a consent agenda, and there's a few pieces we'll pull out. So I don't know if anyone had any of the minutes that they wanted to pull out before we, because they haven't submitted any changes they wanted to them. Okay, so Board of Public Works minutes, Robin, do you want to come up and update us anything, or? Thank you, sir.
Robin Davis, the interim general manager for the BPW. Just a couple of updates on a few of the projects. The canal crossing, the water mains on American Legion, and Gilznack Road will be tied in to the canal crossing pipe by the end of the week, hopefully, if weather permitting. It's bad next couple of days. After that, once it gets connected, they'll do pressure testing and bacteria testing. If everything goes all right, we're gonna open the pipe up. So hopefully, in the next few weeks, we're winding down on the water. Then the restoration for the paving and all the site work stuff will be done, weather permitting. On the well header pipe, the main pipe has been put in already, it's been installed for a while. T.O. is working through connecting the existing wells, removing them off the old pipe, putting them on the new. They've done well five and well four. They're working on well three now. And hopefully, in a couple of weeks, they'll do two, and a couple more weeks, they'll do one. That project is supposed to end middle of March of this year. Then the water tower, we had a preconstruction meeting February 23rd. They were given notice to proceed. We received the county building permit, so we're ready to move on. Completion date expected September 2026. Other than that, our board, next board meeting is Wednesday, February 26th, at four o'clock, right here in the council chambers.
Robin, thank you for that good update.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
All good news.
Okay, Chief, is there anything you want to pull out, or? Oh, go ahead.
I do have one addition, or just more for council's information. The signs on Savannah Road from Drake Knoll to the bike trail have been installed. No stopping, standing, and parking, with the exception of one remaining sign that a little more complicated and has to be drilled through some concrete. So maintenance did take care of that last week. Yep.
Then I see, Bill Henry, are you prepared to come? Just, I know we have your report for the fire department. Did you want to come and speak about anything? I know that, I think Councilperson Marasco might have some questions around.
I did. Whether you want to do it here or next month, that's fine. But we wanted to hear from you, kind of the priority of fire hazards, you feel, that we should be aware of. What are you concerned about within the city of Lewis, so that we can have a better appreciation on council about where our fire risks are? So seasonal, we understand, but your insights from your team is something we would like to know about. Okay, and we're fine if you want to do that at another meeting.
Some other workshop?
I can speak now, sir.
Sure, come on up, Bill Henry. Just for the record, just introduce yourself and, yeah, let us.
Bill Henry Buckle, fire chief in Lewis. I was told you had concerns of maybe, like, something that happened in Los Angeles, like?
Well, not the extreme of Los Angeles, but, you know, we don't want to find ourselves as surprised, perhaps, as some of those elected officials were, and so we wanted to hear from the experts to tell us.
Just historically, Lewis Fire Department is always, I've been in for 42 years, and talking to past chief Wally Evans, who's actually the president now. You know, he's been in for 50 years now, and there's always been preparation, you know, for the marshes or the state park. And Lewis is fortunate, we have the proper water supply that we feel in case something happened. Of course, we're bordered by water, you know, the canal and the bay. There is houses on the, on the bayside, the canal side of Cedar Street, you know, that we're concerned about. And in my 42 years, we've had a couple of fires in the marsh for fireworks or whatever. And we've set up on the side streets, and the fire never got to us, you know, never got to the houses. So that's always been a concern, but we've always prepared for it and pre-planned for it. And, you know, I think it was New Year's Day, 1970, when the, basically, the in-town kind of burned at the corner. You know, that's always on our back of our mind, on a strong wind. You know, if there was ever a fire on Second Street with all the houses close together, or the buildings. But we've been pretty lucky, and we're always pre-planning. And, you know, we're very educated, and we train, our crew trains all the time. And with the Delaware regulations for fire, and we feel that we're real adequate for an emergency.
What kind of, just briefly summarize your outreach for citizens? We have a senior citizen population, so what kind of outreach or services? I know in, when the chief has the Lewis night out, you're present as well. But just briefly, what are the things that residents know that, you know, I don't know if you have a smoke alarm program, or you, what kinds of services can you offer to citizens to help them protect their personal property?
There is a, there is a smoke detector program. If anyone can afford smoke detectors, there's a program where they, we can, they can come pick them up. Or someone, the elderly, we have a program where they can call the fire station, and some of our guys will go out and physically check their batteries for them. You know, we're, on our website and on social media, we're always putting announcements up there, you know, like, when you do your clocks in the spring and fall to, you know, check your batteries. You know, we're just busy, you know. We're, we used to be the summer capital of the world, now we're the summer capital of the world plus the, you know, retire, you know, community. And our ambulance, our EMS, I think for, I don't have the paper in front of me, but I think in January, it was over 500 EMS calls, and I know we had 84 fire calls. And it's just, just funding, you know. The county keeps, you know, agreeing to these new developments, and our funding doesn't increase. Our calls were doubled in the past 10 years, more than doubled. So, and, you know, a lot of people that move here, you know, they might be firemen in their, before they retired, and, you know, they want to, they would like, they would want to help, but, you know, they don't want to ride fire trucks anymore. So we always have something. We have outreach programs that we go to the different developments, not necessarily in the town limits, but in our Lewis Fire District. And we always, we have an auxiliary. It's not ladies auxiliary, we call it auxiliary, because there's, there's men and women that serve. And there's always, there's always something for someone to do, volunteer, not necessarily run fire trucks. So we reach out to those kind of people, and they're really glad to help. The, we try to push the, for new, for new construction, you know, for sprinklers and the residents, even though it's not, I think the town is required now.
It's required here.
Yeah, I commend the town for doing that, but, you know, we're not there yet in the, outside of the town limits. But, but the fires that have happened and houses that have sprinklers actually put the fire out. I mean, there's obviously smoke damage and all that, but usually the fire is pretty much contained by the time the fire department gets there.
I had a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Please, go ahead. Yeah, I had a question. You know, this funding, I know, is a real problem, and we've made a contribution.
Yes, we're grateful.
To Lewis Fire Company. And what I've always been trying to wrap my head around here recently is, it's such a big area. And I asked when the reports are given, if they could just kind of single out Lewis, so we know how much we're using. But my other part of that question is, the organizations outside, you have a lot of housing developments and things. Do you have anyone to go to to ask for donations, like you can come to us? Is there a place you can go to ask them for donations?
The county council and, and.
You send around your mail or outside of the city limits, I assume?
Yes, yes.
You know, the envelopes to add for donations and such.
This is more effective to be able to come to us, but I wondered, there's no other towns to go to out there.
Sometimes the developers will come to the fire station thinking that we have a say or can help them get approval, and we always stay neutral. But, you know, there's, you know, we're always telling our politicians and our council members, you know, even if there's a tax on new, or, you know, new homes in the future or something like that. Last year, I think, was almost 8,000 calls altogether, EMS plus fire. And usually, it's around 16% of the calls, EMS and fire are within the town limits of Lewis.
16. I have a question. Mr. Buckle, I believe it was at our last monthly meeting, there was a representative from the fire department who came. His name, I cannot recall, but someone up here might. Anyway, the gentleman made a statement that got my attention. And the statement was based, was directed to fires that were caused by lithium batteries.
Were that involved lithium batteries?
I'm sorry?
Or that involved?
Right.
I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I didn't phrase that right. Okay, anyway, if there is any kind of consumer information that you might share, or your department might share for the citizens about, I don't know, that's a disposal issue, you know, where they're not being handled correctly? Or if this is spontaneous combustion, you know, where batteries are being recharged? I don't know, but it would help, I think it would help the general public if we had a better handle on what we should be doing and how.
I'm still learning about these batteries. But I know, I know in Lewis, I think we've had one lithium, like a small power tool, like a drill or something.
I see.
On one of the developments off Gilznack Road. And luckily, they were home, the homeowners were home, and they got it out of the garage fairly quickly by the time we got there.
I see.
I think upstate Townsend or somewhere had a vehicle on fire, and they had to use thousands of gallons of water to contain it.
And I understand, too, they mentioned that it was unknown, but they were thinking that after those fires, they had to dispose of the fire suits and all that. So it's an added call.
It's a whole big deal. I mean, you know, it's, you know, our firemen that go to these kind of fires, you know, they get exposed. So now their gear is out of service until we can get it cleaned, and it's just.
Oh, you do get it cleaned, it doesn't get disposed.
We have capabilities at all three stations to wash our gear. And that's a really big thing now, that, you know, you know, cancer within the fire service. Gear, even like the command unit, you know, having gear inside your vehicle, this, that's, it's. So we have a system where we're always, everybody has to maintain their gear monthly. And we have checks on that, just for us here in Lewis, but it's a big deal.
Bill Henry, one more question. I appreciate you coming.
Sure.
And the one is, this one's a bit more awkward in terms of the, a few months ago, the gentleman who made some insensitive comments, and I think one of the repercussions was he was meant to go to, like, some, maybe have some sensitivity training or something like that. And some citizens have asked whether that has occurred, one, and then, two, was that just for the one volunteer, or was that something that you were going to do company-wide?
We do that company-wide. We take, we have an harassment class you have to take once a year.
Okay.
I have to take it twice for my work and the fire department. And it's a requirement for the state of Delaware now.
Anything else that, any, to Joe's point, are there any opportunities for the residents to come, like, events that you might be holding or other things in terms of fundraisers?
We have our big open house for the fall for fire prevention with the kids. That's our, that's our big one. At the, at our banquet the other night, she, you expressed maybe come and see in some of our new addition at station, at the station. And I said, anytime, just let us know, short notice, long notice.
I did have one other question. And someone brought this up to me, and it's sort of funny. You're called a volunteer fire company, but you're more paid, right?
We are a combination department.
Okay, so the person mentioned to me that in some areas, if you buy a home and they come and the insurance company decides how much they're going to charge you for your insurance, if it's a volunteer fire company, they have to pay a higher insurance rate. But if it's got a certain percentage of full-time, and it's categorized differently, that the insurance costs go down. And I, my question for you was, do you know how your company is categorized by insurance companies?
Probably for our name, Lewis Fire Department. It's not Lewis Volunteer, where some departments are, have the official volunteer name in their name. But we are Lewis Fire Department Incorporated. We have seven employees around the clock and eight or nine during the day.
Well, I had asked that question to a local insurance agent, and they said that what happens is, they don't make that determination, that when they know a house is being bought in a certain area, it's kind of at a very high level. So I thought, wow, that would be great to know. I mean, if our folks get a break, because you guys really are a very professional fire company. You're not just a backwards volunteer.
We field phone calls, people move here, especially, I call the country anything west of Route 1. It's not really country anymore, but us old school call it west of Route 1. Carl will tell you. You know, somebody will call and say, you know, I've heard from my insurance company, you know, you know, how far is a fire hydrant from my house? That plays into their, into their premium.
Yes.
And so we answer those questions. And before, we never really had hydrants west of Route 1. And now there's, you know, there's, our older developments in Lewis, Quaker Town, Covey Creek, Edgewater, Overbrook, believe it or not, they're not hydrant areas. Edgewater State.
Higher rates.
Right.
That'd be neat to know for our town, because we really are, we have a, we have a water system in town, and that might help our folks when they go to get insurance. Just a thought.
Yeah, appreciate you coming in. I think, yeah, I think what Councilperson Marasco was suggesting, we have workshops that are less, like, more interactive.
Yeah.
And maybe come in.
We could definitely do that.
Might give it a good opportunity, too, to talk about volunteer opportunities more for, you know, the demographic below 65.
Yeah, and I was just thinking about, I was concentrating about the marsh, but, you know, our state park here. You know, we've, when I was a junior fireman in the 80s, we, I went to a fire in state park. On the way to Heron Point on the left and up by a bunker. And actually, that was one of the scariest I've ever been in 40-some years. The wind changed, and it jumped the road, and we were, like, surrounded by it.
Wow.
And that's, that's the only time I've ever seen it happen, but, you know.
Those black pines in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, but Mother Nature sometimes takes care of it, you know, with that 1994, I think, when the ice, a lot of the tree branches fell, and that kind of cleared up, different things. And I know the state forestry, they used to spray off the, off Cedar Avenue. And, but, you know, now the frags are pretty much, and they have controlled burnings back there in the past. And now with all the spoil areas for the dredging, that's kind of knocked down a lot of the frags in that area. But I'll, this workshop thing, I'll bring that back, and that's a good idea. And when we have retirees, the Bernie, who you probably spoke to, he's, he's got, he brings, like, 30, 40 years' experience from, from the different counties in Maryland. And we're, like, probably 10 years behind, you know, Fairfax, Prince Howard County, Prince George's County, and so, and we're learning from him. We're taking advice from him.
No, I thank you for responding, and the city is looking at grants, particularly with FEMA, and fire hazard is obviously one of their concerns. So the more we understand what you all feel are the fire hazards, then we can incorporate that in grant applications as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill Henry. Appreciate it. We're gonna take public comment at the end. So the presentation of the financial activities report, this is something new that we've done, starting last month, is that right, Ellen Marine?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, before you jump to that item, did you want to act on the minutes?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We finally got to that, yeah. So now that we've gone through the reports, yeah, can I get a motion to receive the consent agenda? Good catch.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, take it away, Ellen Marine.
So, yeah, again, this month, we are displaying a summary of the activity, financial activity for the city. So on pages one and two, you're gonna see a summary of the revenues and expenditures for all of the city funds. If you go to page two at the bottom, this is a total of all of that activity. And so 10 months into fiscal year '25, we should be at 83% of budget. As you can see, revenues are at 101%, and expenditures are at 80%. And so some areas to highlight for you this month are gross rental receipts tax. It is due February 1st. At the end of January, this revenue was at 77% of budget, or $642,000. And today, I just checked it, and we are at 85% of budget. So you can see where we've collected a lot after the January 31 year, month end. For licensing, to include business and rental licensing, at the end of January, we were at 81% of budget. And again, to date, we are at 89% of budget, and we will see licensing revenue come in throughout the year as contractors obtain jobs in the city. And our building permit revenue at the end of January was 168% of budget. So we've had a lot of development, and a lot of that is from new development. We are getting ready for our, let me back up. The third page of this report is our balance sheet. So it's comparing January 31, '25 to January 31 of '24. Our total assets are up almost $2 million, and our liabilities, for the most part, are down about $4,500. So that's a good thing. We are starting to prepare our '26 budgets, and more details of that will be in the city management report. So there are questions about the financial report? Detail can be found on the agenda, all 28 pages.
Yeah, exactly. For those who are interested, it's always up there in links. And as Ellen Marine mentioned, it'll get to in the report, but we're starting our budget meetings as council this week on Thursday, and then there'll be the following three Fridays after that. Yeah, okay, all right. Do we need to receive that, or that's?
It's an action, yeah.
Okay, so let's, can I get a motion to receive the financial activity report?
I'd like a motion that we receive the financial activity report.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks for that. All right, ready for that?
Okay.
So Mayor, as you mentioned, February is Black History Month, and so we wanted to honor and recognize all the contributions of our African-American. to honor and recognize all the contributions of our African-Americans in Lewis, and as well as the work that our African-American Heritage Commission has done. So we want to celebrate those that have shaped our community, because each one of our African-Americans have left us a legacy. Some of the great work that our African-American Heritage Commission, which was established January 13th of 2020, have done is naming of the West Forest Street, a once predominantly black neighborhood, named it in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way, naming of Johnny Walker Beach, a local entrepreneur. And the work currently working on is to create a timeline of the Lewis African-American history. And so they've already documented over 70 historical, significant events. Most notable legacy is the Juneteenth Celebration, which began in 2022. And so this year will be the fourth celebration. This does bring the entire Lewis community together. It is intentionally held in the once predominantly black neighborhood, and it is purposely in the park, named after the first Lewis African-American elected mayor, the Honorable George H.P. Smith, who served the residents of Lewis for 28 years, the last of 10 years was as mayor. And so personally and on behalf of the city, I want to thank and honor and recognize the history contributions, sacrifices and services of the African-Americans in the city and in the Lewis community that they have made to us. So I want to thank all of those. Okay, so moving on to road updates. Tonight, council will be taking action to award the bid for the Ocean View Boulevard or Phase 26 Street Improvement Project. This, a pre-construction meeting is tentatively scheduled for the week of, first week of March, with construction beginning mid-March. And as always, weather-dependent, this project is anticipated to be done by the end of May. Dredging at Canalfront Park, as you can imagine, there was a weather delay in January. But the dredging of Canalfront Park Marina, and just learned recently, three private marinas slips have been dredged. Two private marinas are left to be completed, and is anticipated they will be done this week. Obviously, tomorrow may cause a delay. But the whole project will be done by the March 1st deadline. The Canalfront Park Playground update. The essential missing equipment has been received and will be installed, hopefully next week by the contractor. A separate contractor will be working to address the water sharing from the tennis courts. This water will be diverted to an existing storm drain that will be away from the playground. So we all look forward to seeing that go up. And as I mentioned, we are working on the '26 draft budget. It was delivered to council on February 1st. Our fiscal year '26 begins April 1st of '25 and goes through March 31 of '26. And as has been stated, the first presentation of this draft budget will be this Thursday, February 13th, at 1:00 in this room. And you can click on that link to obtain a copy of the draft '26 budget. So this is something new that we're showing this month, and this is to show all the hard work that staff members, as well as Councilwoman Roscoe, has aided us with to apply for grants. We've been the recipient of a couple of those grants, and we are awaiting responses from others. Despite the freezing of some grants, we're still actively seeking and preparing for grant applications should that freeze come off, so that we're ready to go and obtain all that. So so far, we've received the grant for Teddy Grant, which is a Tree for Every Delawarean. This is a $10,000 grant, and it will be to plant 66 trees in Stango Park Extended and in George H.P. Smith Park. We have also been the recipient of a second ORPT, or Outdoor Recreation Parks and Trails Program, grant of $100,000. This will go towards the Canalfront Park Playground. So combined, the city has received two ORPT grants totaling $225,000 for this project. We've also have tentatively learned that we've been the recipient of a Urban and Community Forest Grant of $5,000 to plant new trees along Park Avenue, along with a $7,000 grant to remove invasive species in Great Marsh Park, the Invasive Tree Species Removal and Management Grant. The IRA Grant, $50,000 to plant trees on East Third Street and then landscape the area by the trail where the BPW is placing the water main. And the Delaware 250 Grant was submitted today for $5,000 for the kiosk at Johnny Walker Beach. The city has received a war notification of the Safe Streets and Roads for All of $284,445. This is a 7525 grant. We haven't received funds for this yet, but we have received notification, and Janelle is actively working this, this grant to make sure we're ready for it. And it is a demonstration, four proposed demonstrations will be used for this funding. We are also working on applying for two TAP projects. The due date for those TAP projects, or Transportation Alternatives Program, is this Friday. So we'll be submitting for those. And then with the help of the University of Delaware IPA and GMB, we will be submitting for FEMA funding, four city projects, and three BPW projects. And these are for a variety of funding that's offered through FEMA, but we will be submitting them to DEMA for consideration.
I had a question about one of the grants, the tree grant. I noticed that there is, there are some funds available for these trees. Will that be impacted at all by any of the construction that might be taking place along those corridors?
So the, do you mean along the trail where the BPW is doing their work?
I was thinking more about the Park Avenue corridor because of some of the work that might be taking place there.
This is going to be on your way to the boat ramp, right?
So the Urban and Community Forest Grant for $5,000 is for Park Avenue, but it's in the verge between the sidewalk and the roadway.
Double strip, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we specifically.
I don't like that term.
I know.
That's a terrible term. We specifically, Marty Thompson and Julia led that effort, and we specifically raised the Fourth Street BPW city projects to make sure that they were planting outside of that. So they were aware of the zone of that project activity.
Perfect. I was worried that that might interfere with that planting, because it'll be really nice to have some trees on that street. Great.
I think what's important here, and I'm so glad you have this, and I think hold us to this, is we've got a strong team, as our city manager mentioned, of staff and GMB and a few of us to keep this vibrant. Now, there's a lot of freeze going on with federal government, but the fact is, none of the programs we're looking at have been canceled, okay? They have been frozen funds with some priority, but the safer projects are the safety projects, okay? So I think we're still in good shape, and, you know, my coordination with Ellen Raines and Janet's team is, when an agency puts out a notice of funding, you respond, and then you might have to hold or wait, and things might change, but you don't stop applying for grants.
Well, I just want to offer kudos to the group and the folks that have made this happen, because this is awesome, that we're bringing these kinds of grants into Lewis. I think it's wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a few work anniversaries. One, we've recognized tonight for her five years of service to the city. We also want to recognize DJ in our Building Department, who's been with the city one year. So there are a number of upcoming meetings. Then the next one after this, tonight's meeting, is February 12th. We're having a public hearing, and right now it's on schedule. I don't know if this public is meant to hear this topic, because this came from our January 6 rescheduling public hearing, so.
Just gets snowed out. It's so sad.
So stay tuned, but right now it's still on track for 5:30 Wednesday night.
And if that was to be canceled, that would be posted on the website, I assume?
Yes, we would post it on our website, and we would send out email blast.
Thank you.
We have a budget hearing on Thursday, the 13th, a second budget hearing on the 21st, the workshop on the 27th, a third budget hearing on the 28th, and then we're back again on March 10th for our regular meeting. The next BPW meeting is on February the 6th. And meeting agendas are required to be published seven days in advance. So if you don't see an agenda has been published, it's not seven days prior, but once it is seven days, you should see it. So here's a listing of additional meetings of our committees and commissions. There's no, they're staying busy as usual. So a lot of those will be having agendas published soon. On activity-wise, our parks and marina permits, as is expected, January, we're not as busy. But year-to-date, we've seen not as many bonfires as we did in fiscal year-to-date for '24, but I think we had that burning ban, which kind of limited a little bit. But the others are pretty much trending above. Park use is certainly well above. On refuse, we still are trending lower than we did in fiscal year '24. And on building permits, as indicated by our building permit revenue, which is significantly higher, you can imagine our building permit issuance is higher as well. You will see street breaks is significantly more, 16, and that is because of the Chantel work being done on Ocean View Boulevard. So they are paying for that. And they've also obtained building permits, which is reflected under institutional renovation. And it's there because it's tied to a city asset, which is the roadway. Under Business Licensing and Code Enforcement, January started a new license year. So as you can imagine, a lot of business licenses were issued, 776, and then short-term, 219 rentals, and 87 for long-term rentals. We also did some business license checks, some code violations, and some permit checks in January. So we like to report on this each month, and this is where those who have a comment or concern can submit those via our website, and they will be directed to the appropriate staff that can, is able to respond. The city's website went live July of '24, so we are now seven months into it. And if there, the public has any suggestions, recommendations, I encourage them to use this submit comment and concern feature on our website to share those with city staff. And then lastly, it was at our workshop in January that the results from our National Community Survey were shared. If anyone is interested in seeing more of the details of that, they can click on the "or here" or the image above, and it will direct them to that page where they can learn and find out more details. Are there any questions?
I do have a question for you. Going back to the slide that was grant opportunities and awards, and the Safe Streets and Roads for All, I'm wondering if the, the street, Fourth Street in the Pilot Town Village area between Ocean View and New Road had been identified several years ago for a, I'll call it, well, they were going to do, Del Dot was, was, owned this project, or owned this idea. And that is not part of this, is that correct? And do you know anything about how, if Del Dot has withdrawn their commitment to doing that?
I haven't received anything formally from Del Dot saying that it's been withdrawn. We can follow up and see if it's completely off the table, or if it's just been postponed. I think it was through a TAP project.
Okay. And the idea here was that they were going to try several different design ideas that would be, in effect, pop-up kind of ideas, where to help temper the speeding in the area and also provide better pedestrian safety along Fourth Street.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Follow up.
Thank you. Would appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you, Ellen Raines, for that.
Yeah, thank you.
So now we move into the agenda portion, and we start with, this is I-1 I'm on now. Discussion of Possible Action on a Request from Cell Co. Partnership to Renew a Conditional Use Agreement for a Cell Tower Located at 41 Cape Henlopen Drive. So this is just a sort of a perfunctory.
Annual renewal.
Annual renewal of conditional use.
Yeah.
And it did appear perfunctory. Have we placed the requirement on them that it's annual, or?
The way the code currently reads, it's annual.
Right.
Okay. So all conditional uses require an annual review.
We've asked the same, BB has to come, do the same thing for these buildings that they're using for, you know, health purposes, but they're really residential buildings.
Because our code is requiring it.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I think we're, it seems like we're generating a list of codes to look at.
Right.
And I'm not saying that you shouldn't do something annually, but certain things that are just perfunctory maybe shouldn't be bothered by annual, right?
Should probably be handled administratively.
They should be handled administratively. So I just think, I mean, you're the.
You're going to be seeing something to address this issue.
Okay.
That came before the planning commission, so at your next workshop, there may be an update on how to address this issue.
That'd be great. Seems like it's taken up a lot of people's time. This is like where efficiency is real, that we could have something efficient. Thanks.
So essentially, they're relying on their request through letter. It's been in place with, it says 2019.
Yes. And the city has not received any complaints or any concerns regarding the cell tower.
Right, thank you.
Potentially go on the consent, the consent agenda.
Could go on the consent agenda, right.
On a motion?
Yeah, motion. To approve?
Yeah. I motion that we approve the request from Cell Co. Partnership to extend the, the conditional use agreement.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second. I'll get to Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, I have I-2. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding a Waiver Request from Chapter 17039(c) for Carriage House at Cape Henlopen Regarding an Increase in Time for the Site Plan Approval. And so for this one, as recall, this one went to Planning Commission, that unanimously agree that to grant the extension, what they're asking for is a six-month extension. They believe they can get it done in two or three.
Correct.
And then we had a public hearing. We've received no comment.
Correct.
So I get, the motion I'm looking for is approval of the extension.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the extension as submitted for the carriage house at Cape Henlopen, at the carriage houses.
I'll second.
I just want to comment that I'm glad the applicant has come forward and not right at the end of the timeframe. So I really appreciate that you, you gave the whole process time to respond. And so I want to thank the applicant for that process, and the city planner working with city planner.
And I might make a comment, but I think Janelle helped us out there as far as reminding us, because sometimes time gets away. So thank you, Janelle.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, yeah, to that, I think Janelle, another thing she talked about is, I think in our code, we may want to look at extending those, because the, the agency approvals have gotten longer and longer, so our code may no longer be, reflect what the reality is of getting your approval. So that's another we might need to look at. So appreciate you being on top of that one, Janelle. Okay, next, thank, thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
So next, I-3, Continued Discussion Regarding Requests to Place a Lewis Historic Marker at Black Harry Spring and a Proposed Development of City-Sponsored Historical Marker Program. So I think we had Alicia come for us a few times to talk us through this. So I think what we're looking for here is an update of, I think it sounded like there was a general approval of the idea. I think so this, I think if you want to give us an update on stat, what you've gone away and sort of discovered in terms of maybe putting together a process for this.
And so the recommendation for council to consider is having the Historical Society take the lead on this city historical marker program in coordination with the city staff. I have reached out and briefly floated this idea past the executive director of the Historical Society, and they are interested in exploring it further.
Okay. So as a next step, they would frame up how this would work and the initial?
I think if staff could have time to meet with the Historical Society, develop a framework, then we can.
develop a framework, then we can come back and share, share that idea with council.
Okay. Okay. That's, yeah, because I don't think there was action here as such. I think that's what we asked you to do is go away and see what LHS's willingness was to participate in this role. Because I think we, we acknowledge, while we support it, we're not in a role to deem, you know, what might be significant or not. So it'd be good, it's great that the LHS is willing to take, take on that role, so.
Certainly can help with the research.
That would be great, okay. So Alicia, do you want to come forward? I think, just to, since it is, involves sort of your, the genesis of your idea, I think that's where I think we go forward as a, as a council.
Oh, excuse me?
Yep.
Well, I have to identify myself again. My name is Alicia Jones, and I live on Pilot Town Road. And it all started because there was this spring that I passed every day, and I didn't know who he was. And you can tell what we've gone through. I've been working on it for almost nine months now. And I certainly, in this instance, would like to be involved with the Historical Society through fruition, because I actually have another idea for a marker, which may prove to be more controversial. I just want to go back and correct something regarding West Fourth Street. The African American Society Historical, whatever it's called, Commission had not been formed. And the people responsible for West Fourth Street are Reverend Edwards, who came up with the original idea. And I wrote a letter about him waiting eighteen months for an answer. So I was involved. And the third person was Bill Colick. And those were the people involved. And the African American Commission was formed afterwards, okay? I tend to do stuff on my own many times like this. This is not going through the African American Heritage Commission. So I want to, want to be clear, I act independently. I'd like to make, can I?
No, at the end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, stay on topic.
Okay.
So that's where I think we would just, wanted an update on this. And then, yeah, you're welcome to make a comment at the end of the.
Okay, I will. You can see that they're looking for the pricing at this point, because it's, was outdated. I think it was in August, and they gave us sixty days. And I kept going back. I'm also happy to see that at the end, Lewis's panel recommends nonprofit funding. And I also have a nonprofit myself. So that might mean that the city might end up paying for my marker, not my nonprofit, all right? Because it's under four thousand.
Or we could be a pass through.
Okay.
Thanks, Alicia.
And the last thing, I don't remember you having that white spot. At all, so I wonder if.
It wasn't spontaneous, yeah.
I, I just wonder where it's suddenly, I kept thinking maybe it's the lighting. All right, and I'll wait till the end when it's approved.
I don't pay for these with mon, I don't pay for this with money. Okay, so. Yeah, yeah, I pay for it in other ways. So the next is I four. And this discussion of possible action is scheduled, public hearing regarding overfall preserve. And my understanding here is that we're actually, we're better positioned to set a public hearing at the March meeting for an April date.
Correct.
Because we, but what we, what we are going to acknowledge this evening is that we have received the report from the planning commission. And I think the applicant has done the same. So this will give them time to, to sort of digest that report. And so I think we're in a better position to do that, okay?
We'll make sure that happens.
Is that, you're not, that's okay? That timeline works for you, Mr. Hut? Okay. So that's, that's what we'll do then is, in essence, we'll defer this until March and then set in April. And we, we have a, just a tentative date that we can give Mr. Hut tonight, so.
Tentative April seventh.
Tentative April seventh, tentative. But more than likely that is, because we do, that's the first day, first Monday in April, yeah?
Yes, it is.
So that's, that's more than likely the date we'll put. Okay. But we won't do that tonight?
Mayor, for the record, if you could just take the action of receiving.
Receiving the report, okay. Thanks, Alex. So then, can I get a motion to receive the planning commission's recommendation, the report of the recommendation? We're not approving their recommendations. What we're approving is the fact that we've received the report. Understood?
So we're acknowledging receipt.
I'll make a motion that we've received the report from our planning commission regarding the overfalls project.
Thanks, Joe.
And I'll second.
Second by Councilperson Rasko, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good, all right. So we are now moving along here to J one. And this is discussion of possible action on bid recommendations for Ocean View Boulevard. This is Phase twenty six, street improvement projects. Vince didn't know I was talking about until I said it was Phase twenty six, you know? That's why we need that header. We have no idea what you're talking about when you say Phase twenty six, so.
I hear you.
We'll keep both languages there.
Good evening.
Hey, yeah, go ahead, Vince.
I'm sorry, Vince Luciani with GMB. As everyone probably already knows, bids were received for the Pilot Town Village Street and Stormwater Improvement Project, Phase twenty six, Ocean View Boulevard, goes by all three of those names, I guess. They were open on January fifteenth. We received three bids. The three contractors were HCE, Jerry's Paving, and George and Lynch. The low bid was in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents, and that came from a contractor called HCE. The, the bid also included three items, three bid items for the, that were the responsibility of Board of Public Works. They were stormwater related, there were bid items A five, A six, and A seven. The amount of, the total amount of the BPW work was one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars even for the, for the, for the low bidder. And the good news on the bids were two of the three bids came in below the budget estimate for the project. So the, the bad news, I guess, if you want to call it that, was HCE is a contractor who has not contracted with the city previously. So GMB had to go and do a fair amount of due diligence. And I can report on the findings of that due diligence. So what I found is GMB has worked with HCE, and I'll start with public work, because that's probably what's most appropriate here. The public work where GMB has worked with HCE most recently is the Donovan Smith project. They were a subcontractor to Teal. So they were not the general contractor, they were subcontractor. They did all the paving in there, probably close to a half a million dollars in value. They did all the roads inside the development, and they milled and paved Donovan's Road as part of that project. I was the project manager on that project. So I can personally state that, you know, they were more than qualified, no issues, no real issues on the project. Paving jobs, good paving jobs, so no issues on that. GMB has also worked with them in the town of Laurel. It was a water and sewer project with road restoration. I don't know the dollar value of the paving there. I know there were some issues with the paving. They came in, addressed them as punchless items, no cost to, to the owner. Talked to Dean Culver, who heads our construction group. He basically reported the same thing, that, you know, they're a qualified paver. In addition to GMB-related public work, I asked for references from the county, I mean, from the, from HCE. And what they sent me is some of the public work that they've done in the past. They've completed a project for Sussex County. It's the Peninsula Community Road Repairs. I spoke, I didn't speak to them, I called, left a message for Mark Harmer, who's the county engineer. He got back to me by voicemail. He said they did a decent job, no issues on the project.
Excuse me, Vince, and you're still speaking about HCE, is that correct?
Still speaking about HCE, yep.
That project at the Peninsula, wouldn't that have been a private road, HOA road?
It, it's probably that county has a program where they come in and they, they take care of the roads for the development, and then there's a special taxes assessed to it. It used to be called the SCI, I think, program. I'm not sure if they still have that or not. But I know that, you know, they complete project, paving projects in the subdivisions. I also talked to the town of Bethany Beach, where they're currently paving several roads. It is the first project that they've done for Bethany Beach. I spoke to Brett Warner, he's the Public Works Director, and he said they're doing a fine job, quotes. They also gave me, you know, a list of references for other public work. I didn't call them, because they're not really street projects, they're more, one was a boat ramp, one was, looks like a parking lot for the police department. One was for Worcester County, they did the boat ramp. Town of Delmar, they've done a police department paving project. And so that, that would be public work. On the private side, subdivision work, GMB's worked with them since two thousand and nineteen. And they're doing, they're doing quite a bit of work in Millville currently. There's three projects, I believe, going on in Millville. GMB is a town engineer from Millville, where we do the inspection for the town. And we're, we're involved with the, with the, you know, the work that they're doing there in terms of an inspecting capacity. They seem capable, qualified. They seem to be able to maintain schedule, no, no real issues with the schedule, and no real issues outside of the normal construction-related issues, so.
Vince, I have one question. Blue, could you bring up the next slide on, on the breakout here?
Yes.
The delta on A seven?
Yes.
Yeah, can you explain that?
So.
I mean, it's a pretty huge delta there.
I can tell you, so that, that bid item is, was not like very, very well-defined in terms of photographs or quantification of cracks or whatever. And it was really up to the bidder to go and take a look at the, there's seven catch basins that the board wanted coated with an epoxy coating. And we just felt like it wouldn't be prudent to coat them without addressing these cracks, the cracks in the brickwork and stuff like that. So it's very minor, and I've looked at every one of them, it's very minor. So the two large numbers, I was actually, when they came in, I was actually very surprised to see forty-seven thousand dollars for epoxy coating of eleven catch basins. And they're, they're shallow catch basins, they're not very deep. And so I, the only thing I can think of, they got the quote from, I think they got the same subcontractor.
They must use the same subcontractor.
I, I thought that forty-seven thousand dollars was outrageously high, yeah. The sixteen-five, I think, is, is doable, okay? I estimated maybe like five gallons of the epoxy coating for the eleven inlets. And the cost of the epoxy is probably, I'm sorry, five gallons for the fixing the cracks. And, you know, that, that would be.
You don't think they've underbid that?
No, I don't think they've underbid it. I think, I unfortunately think the other bids have overbid it.
But it, but the, did your RFP specify what material would be used?
Yes, it's very specific on what to use for filling the cracks and for the epoxy coating itself. There's specification for both of those products.
It's existing anyway, they're not replaced. So theoretically, it's, it's a repair job. So if they need to spend more, it's not something they're going to repair the road and then, oh, well, it's too late to repair it.
It's a fixed cost, right? I mean.
It's a lump sum cost for that line item.
Correct. So in other words, if there's overage, the contractor would eat that overage, they have no way.
If he underbid it, it, yeah. Most he's getting paid for that item is sixteen-five.
Got it.
Could anything be considered a change order if they find something that seems to have been outside of the specs?
On that particular item itself?
Well, I'm thinking of the drainage, well.
I mean, that's the only one that has a huge delta.
So. So that, that item is a lump sum, the, the lining of the storm drain is a per foot.
The unit is per foot?
Yeah, it is per foot.
Well, the one thing that I'm kind of thinking of is, I'm looking at A thirteen, and it talks to restoration. And we go from like seventy-eight hundred to five hundred and then to fifteen hundred. And when I looked at, when we did a tour in that area, it looked like there was some significant restoration, but.
So restoration.
Did they confuse that with the epoxying? Were they, was an overlap there?
So when, when we have that line on restoration, what we're really referring to is the restoration of areas beyond the work, a transition from the work area to the private property, if it's disturbed in any which way. On this project, the restoration is, should be very minimal, because there isn't a lot of regrading or, you know, there, I guess the only place I see where restoration, that restoration line then would come into play would be where they're replacing some of the sections of curb. Like if they are pulling out the old curb and they disturb.
Sure.
The, the person's property, they have to go regrade, plant seed, whatever, so.
Yeah, but that would be covered under.
They have something for that, topsoil, fertilizer, seed and mulch.
Right, that's B five.
Well, that's a contingency, that would be a contingency item. That would be used only, the contingency are only if and where directed. So the contingency B five would be, let's say they're out there and we decide, hey, we want to do this over there, that over there, and we disturb something, then they would be paid for that restoration under that B five item.
Right.
And that's, and it. But anything they disturb in doing the work that's called for in this project, they have to restore, and that would be in the A, A thirteen.
Right, and I actually, my question, I kind of flagged A thirteen, and I also flagged A one mobilization. It seems to me that that, those costs would be shared between the BPW and the city, because they, they're being contracted to serve both part, each party. And it seems to me that there would only be a sharing. And yet it's, I believe it's assigned only to, to costs are assigned to the city.
I mean, I guess you could make an argument that they should.
I'm making that argument, Vince.
It should be, something could be proportioned to the BPW based on, so one, one hundred and thirty-two divided by seven hundred and twenty, whatever, what the, what's the total?
Right. I guess the more significant with the.
One thirty-two divided by the seven twenty-three, eight eighty-eight, whatever that percentage is, I guess. Yeah, technically, you can make an argument that the board should share in that.
Well, I, I, along the same line, I wanted to make a comment just overall, because one of the things that, I, I want to go to process, okay? I want to talk process. We know we need to get this in by a certain timeline.
Correct.
So we get this done in the spring. We know we've been fighting that battle. And so I'm glad this is where it is, because we need to get this project done. However, looking back and in the future, is there any way that when we have a project where we're working jointly with the BPW and the city council, that we can have this take place at a BPW meeting where both organizations are present to discuss these bids and get into some of the detail, rather than us doing it separately?
But we could put that on a workshop, but we can't take votes at those meetings.
Oh, we can't? Why, why can't we make it so we can? Can we ask to?
I mean, I don't know.
It's a joint.
I'm, I'm hesitant to get in those conversations about that without Mike Hoffman, yes. But we could certainly have upcoming joint meetings or joint projects on the workshop to discuss.
Yeah.
So you could air out where you might be leaning, but we can't, we can't, we don't take votes.
Yeah, I just think in the effort of cooperation and working together when we're talking finance, that it's important to have that discussion. And I understand that our last BPW meeting was over two weeks ago, and this, this didn't come to our desks until February fourth. So that wouldn't have been possible. But I think in the future, maybe we can try and get these things where we work together a little closer.
I have some questions, but our fire chief looks like he needs to say something.
I've got a fire call getting ready to go to. I just wanted to, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to mention that our combination department, I failed to file, is up there. We just passed our annual budget from the fire department. You know, we're transparent, four point two million, and our, and our payroll for our employees are two point seven million.
Thanks, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for going. Vince, I had some just general questions, and, and I know I've done those kind of calls on evaluation, so yours was extremely thorough. Thank you for that. A couple of questions. One is, do you see from your experience, and the reason I'm asking these questions is not so much about this project, but we're gonna start to have more and more infrastructure projects. The public has made that as one of their highest priorities in the finance meetings. So just as Councilman Elder was mentioning, when we have shared activities, some kind of process that we jointly look at these things and decide where costs are shared. My question are, have you seen in your experience when you want to do a BAFO? So the difference between the low bid and the mid bid here is, is pretty small, really. So do you ever look at a threshold where you would recommend to the city for projects, and I don't know the number, over a million or whatever it is, we, we, GMB, would be recommending a BAFO? Like, here's a good example perhaps when you might want, not necessarily. But I'm just wondering if that's something that, you, you don't have to speak to it today, but...
Yeah.
I believe that we're gonna need a workshop conversation with GMB about procurement best practices so that we make sure that they are in the RFPs. So this one might be an example. Other questions are, this is a lump sum contract, but is it, it's unit-based, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I would not call it a lump sum contract.
I wouldn't call it a lump sum either. Okay, so I'd view this as a unit-based contract.
Yes, right.
Okay, all right. So I just want to make sure that we use that, that language. And then do you all have a unit-based estimate that you are measuring this against?
Yes.
Okay, so I assume that's your normal protocol. So when you see this one variance that's been pointed out by other council members, which is either, it's, it raises a question. What is your normal procurement process? Because when you go to low bidder, you still reserve the right for negotiations. Do you raise that and clear, have them clarify?
So like, let's say all, all three of them bid the same amount, the 47,000 for that.
Right.
I, I would have questioned that, yeah. I might have questioned that.
But, but obviously those two use the same...
I, I flagged it, I flagged it just as you did. I actually flagged it when I was opening the bids.
I bet.
Okay, because I had an idea what that should cost. And when I was opening the bids and I saw that number, I was like, wow, that's a lot higher than anything I anticipated.
So given that it is a unit-based contract, if they by chance overrun that line item but underwrite another's...
So that line item, that line item is a lump sum item.
That, that item is a lump sum item?
Yeah.
Okay.
So they can overrun that item. It's a, there's, there's one unit for that, and it's a lump sum.
They can't in terms of how they bill us, okay?
Correct.
But they could actually overrun it in their practice if...
If they overrun it, they're only getting, they're only getting the, the line item that's stipulated in that bid form.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's a great clarification. But I do, I really would, you know, encourage GMB to help us. I mean, you've been so helpful in the, the CIP process, Charlie and Andrew and others. But let's look at best practices because we're gonna start to want, to make sure we include standard language in our RFP practices and just best practices from you all would be a good working session, I think, to have.
So I would say this to that, like, and I, I agree in that we should have a, a process to look at when there's, you know, some red flags. But for me, when I got these bids, I didn't see any red flags. I actually felt like they were good bids. They were slightly lower than our estimate, which we tend to put some fluff in anyway.
Sure.
And they were pretty, the one and two are pretty consistent.
Yeah.
And George and Lynch, we happen to know from experience, is bidding jobs very high, especially small jobs. So I, I mean, this came in sort of the way I thought it would go. I thought maybe Jerry's might win it because I know, you know, I spoke, he had lots of questions during the bidding process, and I know he lives in town and so forth. And it was very, very tight, as I expected it to be.
And I absolutely concur with you that this looks like, well, I would also say that your bid documents must have been very clear. When you have a good bid response, it's because some of the work that you've done is clear. I would just say in our practices, though, if we had gotten three bids very different, that's when I want to have a practice that says, we take, we don't have to accept them and we actually go out and clarify, or we have a post bid and we pull the bid and put out and issue another one. This one does not need that.
This is not a very complicated project, right? So we all recognize that.
Right.
We've done that before with like the dredging, remember?
Yep, we did.
Where they're just so...
We pulled it.
Yeah, they're just so long for that, you just rebid.
So do I, do I understand that the, what we have in front of us is the, are the three proposals from three different contractors?
Mm-hmm.
And the cost that is, that is shown here, of course, does not show the GMB-related costs associated?
Correct, this is just construction cost.
This is construction, right? All right, good.
So can, does someone want to make a motion to accept one of these proposals? I think you're recommending HCE, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll drop it once.
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal for the Ocean View project that's been accepted by GMB.
Recommended.
And we recommend...
HCE.
HCE LCC, the award, the contract.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilperson Saliba. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Vince.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your... Third. Okay, so now is J2, is discussion and possible action on a resolution in support of a grant application through the outdoor recreation park and trail grant program for the placement, replacement of the children's playground at Canalfront Park. Jan, you want to introduce this one to us?
Sure. So as you know, we did go for a second grant through the ORTP process. And one of the requirements of that grant is to have a resolution by mayor and council so that it shows that there is support from mayor and council for this project. This is for the $100,000 that we were granted. We thought we could use the first resolution, and we can't, so we're coming back just to clear everything up and get it all on the record, so...
And that's what this is?
Yes, yes. So this is for the second ORTP grant award of $100,000.
Okay, Alex, how do you, how do you suggest we accept this? Do I title, are we accepting the resolution?
You can make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Just an up and down vote.
Right.
All right, can I get a motion in that regard then? Can I get a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution as described in J2 for the Canalfront Park Playground Resolution.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Councilperson Rasko. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. And thank you again, thanks for the diligence and continue to find these monies that are out there while they are.
Yeah.
So with that, J3. So this is a presentation of possible action on a, a resolution to authorize BPW to accept state revolving fund loans for the Fourth Street, Park Avenue and Hornkill Avenue projects. And just to be clear, I think tonight we're, all we're voting on is to authorize the, the loan agreement. We're not ratifying any agreements that might be between BPW and the city. So this is simply to, you know, by our charter and their charter just requires us to, anytime they borrow money, to kind of come to us and ask.
Right.
Okay, all right. So with that understanding, I think our people are clear, essentially two tran, or two, you know, three projects here, but we're accepting it all as one funding approval. So any questions or someone want to make a motion?
So one resolution will address all three funding instruments, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Just one resolution for multiple loans.
Right. Okay.
And this, again, just to be clear to the public, this, this is to cover the, what's known as the Fourth Street and Park restoration or, or streets projects and, and water projects. And then also the Hornkill project, which is, involves folks who are not yet on sewer. So one is the replacement improvements of existing.
Well said.
And one is the, the creation of a system for people who are currently on septic.
Right.
So both were the projects. And so with that...
I'll make, I'll make a most and to accept the resolution to authorize BPW to accept state revolving fund loans for the Fourth Street, Park Avenue and Hornkill Avenue projects.
Okay.
Second.
Second, I'll give that to Councilperson Ritzert. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. So that's unanimous. Okay, and then our last item before we take public comment is the discussion and possible action on bid recommendations for public restroom cleaning contracts and the city office cleaning contract. And we'll give a second just to open that. And I think Ellen Lorraine can give us more color. But my understanding here is that we have been using, since COVID, we've been using services to, to clean our restrooms. And our offices have been being done by Servpro for the last couple of years, is that? Okay, so they are one of the bidders along with, you, you can go ahead and just talk us through that, Ellen Lorraine, and then...
So there were two RFPs sent out, one for cleaning of the public restrooms and one for cleaning of city offices. Three bidders submitted bids for each of those RFPs. The first one being Sunflower Cleaning, the second being Servpro of Sussex County North, and the third bidder was Citywide Facility Solutions. If we look at the public restroom bids received, Citywide Facility Solutions was the low bidder for all three years. If we look at the bid for cleaning of offices, Servpro of Sussex County North was the low bidder for all three years. And this would be fiscal year '26, '27, '28. And then it is also being requested tonight that there be a two-year additional. We get three-year contract and then two years additional.
Two-year option.
Yes.
A two-year option.
Option, okay.
When you look at just the low received for each of the two RFPs, fiscal year '26, the total costs are $173,061.86. Year two, total costs are $182,955.18. And year three costs are $191,242.40.
And because of the way that Ellen Lorraine's bid this, we, we do have the option, for example, of taking the low bid from one of the service and, and the low bids. We don't have to give the, the cleaning services to one vendor. You could give, say, the offices to Servpro and the outside bathrooms to, I think, what did you say was Citywide Solutions made the better, the best bid on that one? Okay.
So taking into consideration expenses, this recommendation from city manager is to go with the low bids and have two separate contracts.
That's what you recommend? Okay. So you're, you're not gonna recommend Sunflower Cleaning?
Uh, not tonight.
Okay.
May I ask a question, please? Yeah, the question is, you've done the reference checks on the two vendors who we have not done business with?
Yes, the facilities manager did make those contacts, and she is online if you would like to ask additional questions about those references.
Okay. Good evening, Allison Kirk.
Hello.
Hey, thank you for taking time out of your evening to join us. My question is, did the contractors check out as far as their references? Were you satisfied in any, or persuaded in any way that one should be preferred over another?
I did speak with Citywide Facility Solutions. I spoke with two of their references. I was getting hold of two out of the three so far. I left a message for the third one. I have not heard back yet, but the two that I did speak with did give Citywide positive remarks and praise on the services that they are providing for them.
I have a follow-up question.
They're incumbent, right? Servpro?
Servpro is the one that we currently use for our offices and for our public bathrooms at, for the past three fiscal years.
Right. And when you spoke to the Citywide Facility Solutions company, were, do you have an idea of the type of contracts that they have? In other words, are they serving a municipal client or were they doing commercial cleaning for, you know, office building?
So their references that they gave me, that I spoke with, was Easter Seals of Eastern Shore and with BB Healthcare. Those are the two references I spoke to. The one I left a message for is the Freeman Arts Pavilion. They're the third reference, but I have not heard back from them yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Any, any other questions? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the city manager and award two separate contracts for the cleaning services for public restrooms. That goes to the Citywide. And then for the cleaning services for city offices is Servpro. It was the current one, and it sounds like we did good reference checks as well.
I'll second that.
Second by Councilperson Saliba. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that completes our agenda. And so I'll open it up for public comment. We'll start, let's start first with, there's anyone online holding their little yellow hands up there? Okay. And then, let's go to Alicia. Alicia, I did say we have public comments, so go ahead. Come on up.
Just watch your step there.
I will.
Yeah, there you go.
I wanna, do I have to identify myself again? Thank you. I have a comment on our restrooms. During the Eagles game last night where we soundly defeated the other team, who I won't mention, I was told that we had one of the cleanest restrooms.
All right.
That they, everyone they went to, they were very, very clean, so if that's anything. The other thing, and why I was...
No, sorry, just one comment.
Yes.
No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, I have two more, real quick. The reason I was so pushy in trying to go earlier is because the gentleman, the fire commissioner, has left.
Yeah.
And they were addressed to him. One, he didn't mention, I think, that you could sign up for an ES for $75 a year for an ambulance, and that was cheaper. One of my questions was, in terms of costs, I'd be curious, or maybe he already knows, what the cost was for the town of Lewis and the outside areas of Lewis, the developments, and whether there was one development more than the other or what the average cost was.
They've told us 16%. Well, I think the number they gave us previously was around 700,000, 660 or 680, 680,000 would be our...
Our cost, the town cost?
Yeah, I mean, out of their budget.
Out of, versus everybody else.
They expanded on it, yeah.
Right.
And the third thing was, there were, there've been, since I've been here, just a couple of issues. And I don't know whether they fell under the terminology of harassment.
Yeah, and that's, I asked him about that, and he, he sort of addressed, I think he might have confused my question.
Right.
It sounded like there's an annual thing, but...
But there have been, that may not be that successful because we have ongoing incidents. And what I wondered what their diversity training consisted of. And other than being lectured, I always thought it would be good to sit down with the people he was actually talking about because, first of all, I would ask the question, what has your contact been with black people? Have you grown up in an integrated environment or not? And I know in Lewis, many people here have never interacted with black people unless it's been in service. They don't have them over for dinner, they haven't lived in an integrated school system and integrated development before, and this is many times their first interactions with black people. I noticed when I first moved to Lewis, I didn't see any black people at all. I now know where they live because I made an effort and I've, go to Friendship Baptist and sometimes show up at St. George A&amp;M as well. So I wanted to find out exactly what elements were there because I'd love to have sat down with that person who made that reference and find out where that comes from. They have a program called Dialogue in Action. I don't know if you're familiar with that. The church runs it, and they have people from different sides of, I'll say, the aisle trying to talk to each other. I did it for several years, but I stopped because I was also what they called the I did it for several years, but I stopped, because I was also what they called the facilitator many times, as well as the participant, in trying to make a consensus and understanding. So that's what I'm curious about. What does the diversity or harassment training act like? And I think it would be good, since it happens in Lewis, and we have black people in Lewis, in the town of, to have actual confrontation. And not in a bad way.
Yeah.
Right, not in a bad way. Just sit down, and maybe that would be more meaningful and helpful, even on a department-wide scale rather than an individual. And my other thing was, were there any support for Black Harry emails or anything that you received?
I don't, no, we got a support as such, but I didn't get anything against.
Oh, okay.
So, you know.
All right, okay.
There's something to be said for that as well.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, come on up next. And then I see Carrie, and has got her hand up. We'll take her next.
We're probably going to say the same thing. Brenda Afsel, 418 Park Avenue. And I really am here to thank you, the city council and BPW, for doing everything you can and could for our subdivision. We've worked very hard with you and very long with you, and we're looking very forward to this starting in the early summer, I hope. And then I encourage you not to forget that we have three more streets, so we'll be coming back to you, and hopefully next time we've all learned, this won't be quite so confrontational, it can be more a conversation, and we can get something done for the rest of the community. So thank you very much, all of you.
Carrie, Carrie, can you hear us? Can you take yourself?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Can you hear?
We can now, yep.
Okay. Here, here to Brenda's comments. Brenda and I are the co-chairs of the Burtonville Subdivision Clean Water Coalition, and we couldn't be more thrilled to see this next step towards the progress of getting what we want in our community, to remove the old hundred-year-old pipes, get the new pipes in. And so every step that the city council takes, we're thrilled with. We're showing up today to show you we're behind you a hundred percent, but that doesn't mean we keep, don't keep watching you two right back, Brenda.
Oh, we know.
The piece I want to say is, to echo the remarks of the earlier speaker before that, I was on the subcommittee that dealt with the nonprofit creation and the grant apps, and we have made it clear that applications will require both the participants have a nondiscriminatory project, a nondiscriminatory statement, and that the projects are nondiscriminatory as well. So we echo that. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Carrie. No one else I see online? Anyone else in the room?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes. Terry Porey, Harborview Road. I'm a member of the planning commission. I have second thoughts as to whether I should bring this matter here. Maybe we can, can I have the attention of the council after the meeting, after we are left and off the record?
That's not appropriate, yeah. But you could, I mean, way around it is, you could send us an email, and we don't, then we don't share with each other.
Yeah, but there was an agenda item which you may want to, I mean, an action item that you may want to, I'll go through. Let's simply.
Terry, can I just, can I just comment as the, as the mayor said? In public comment, it's not an exchange, except for like the light conversation we've had for clarification.
Yeah, I'm just going to make, okay, I understand. I'm just going to make my comment. The council a little earlier, and I'm not saying that anything was done which was different than the way things have been done before. It's just that I think there is a process problem in the way that the city council a few minutes ago adopted the reported recommendations from the planning commissions that I'm a member of. The document that you have approved has not been reviewed by any member of the planning commission, not even by the chair. It has been prepared, I suppose, by the city planner, which has been, I'm sure, the past practice. But I find it a little bit problematic, where the document is entered into the record as being the recommendations of the planning commission, when nobody on the planning commission has had knowledge of that document before it was entered into the record. And I personally, when I looked at it just before the meeting, found certain items where it was not entirely consistent with my recollection of what was said. Not that it was anything fundamental, but it was not precisely what we had decided. And I wanted to go back to the video and basically, point by point, compare what we had decided with what has been submitted to you as being the recommendation of the planning commission. So I think it would have been better for the city council to basically wait forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours until the members of the planning commissions have a chance to look at their recommendations, and then go back to the city planners and say, hey, I have a problem with this. Can I have a few minutes to look at the video, and so forth, and so on? As it is now, the action that you have taken has entered into the record as being the recommendations, and that has been communicated to the, to the developer. And I think, from a process point of view, again, I'm not talking of the substance, but as a process point of view, I think it would be better if the city gave a chance before any documentation, document is supposed to emanate from a commission, had a given, gave a chance to the members of that commission, or at the very least, the chair of that commission, to look at it, make sure that they are in agreement with everything, and then enter it into the record as being the recommendations.
Fair point. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay.
It should be noted on this, it does say in the beginning, this summary does not purport to be an exhaustive recap, recapulation, recapitulation of the entire record of evidence and arguments presented to the LPC. The LPC may provide corrections or clarifications to this document.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
You talked about the grants being delayed with this whole freeze. Any more to add to that? Anything specific, anything that really stands a chance of being held up?
I mean, this is my, my personal view, because this is also what I do professionally. No one knows the answer to that question. That would be the honest answer. The second would be, where, where you stay in public safety is stronger, and where you stay in public safety related to intersections is stronger. So Safe Streets for All has a strong likelihood to be funded, because it is following those, those rules. The grants that Delaware has already received, if they've already received the funding, like for our tree programs, that money was already in the state, so they were able to allocate. But I think the federal ones are, they're all questionable, but the freeze doesn't mean they're all gone. So we're going to have to be watching very carefully two things. What happens, and I know that our state elected officials, as well as federal, are watching this for us, so we have received that communication from our state senators. They'll keep us in touch. We also have to look to where funding does happen. So where you will see the grant committee shift is when the roadmap of this administration decides where they're investing. We will look for that. But infrastructure is typically one of the safer places in grants.
Okay. And I bring that up, because I see a judge extended.
Yes.
That freeze this afternoon.
Yes, exactly. And Rhode Island has an interesting judicial structure, that what they rule in Rhode Island, based on their courts, actually applies to the nation. So it was a very strong statement from that judge. But, but we are staying in very, I know that our city planner and city manager are staying in good connection with our federal highways customer. They don't know either. But we're proceeding through all the steps, so that as soon as the money is free, we are ready to go. So we're not, we're not wasting our time, or taxpayer dollar time, to just wait. We're actually making sure everything is lined up, and then we'll be ready to go.
Okay. Bye.
Thanks, Bill. Before we adjourn, I did want to take this opportunity, and we appointed a board of elections this evening, and people have been asking me in the community whether I'll be running for reelection. I will not be running for reelection. So I wanted to be upfront about that, so that people in the community could, you know, possibly think about whether they would be up for this job or other jobs. And also, with the budget coming up, I wanted to be transparent that I was not running for election, so I think it's important for my colleagues and for the community to know that, as I deliberate on that budget. So more to be said later, but it's, it's personal things in my life, both good and bad, and you have to sort of weigh those things, and you're essentially signing up for a full three-year term in the system that we have. So I've weighed that, and I've made the decision that I'm not up for it. I've said before that I view this as not a sprint and not a marathon. And so it's like a relay race, and you run hard through the tape and you hand the baton, and, you know, that's why I hesitate to say I won't reelection, you know, this term, but I might come back into the arena in the future. So I need to step away now, so that I might have the energy to do that. So, and with that, you know, I'd like to, as I said, I have three more months, but so I'll be, I'll have a chance to say my thank yous, but it has nothing to do with this group up here. It's been very good. Our city staff and the police and everyone is just, I think, in a really good place. And, you know, sometime, my son's a musician, you can sometimes leave him wanting more, I guess, or, you know, go up before, you know, you, you know, start, people start seeing the warts. So I think the time is good, so.
Andrew, I've enjoyed serving with you.
I appreciate it. So, all right, well, appreciate, and with that, I'll call for adjournment.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.